Welcome to the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum for Bonny Lake Mayor and City Council. The forum is being sponsored by the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County. I'm Noel Higgins and I'll be your moderator. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past one hundred and one years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens and government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone sixteen or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on our membership, go to our website at www.tacoma-pierce-lw.org. All candidates for Bonny Lake Town Council and both candidates for mayor have been invited multiple times. The candidates who are with us tonight are Michael McCullough for mayor, Dan Swatman for position three, and Pablo Monroy for position six. Thank you for being here. Candidates, you have agreed to the ground rules, which among other things say that you will not discuss each other in your answers. Will you please give a thumbs up now to this important ground rule? Candidates have two minutes for opening statements, ninety seconds for each question, and one minute for closing statements. Our timekeeper is Terri Baker. She will signal you when you have thirty seconds remaining, fifteen seconds, and when it's when it's time to stop. At the final signal, you may finish a short sentence. Please do not talk unless it's your turn. Please mute yourselves when it's not your turn to speak. Please keep your monitor on gallery view so you can see the timer. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. Many questions were sent in advance. If those in the audience have questions, you can text them to two zero six three one zero eight nine six five. The first opening statement will be given by Michael, followed by Dan, and then Pablo. Please, Michael, your opening statement, please.
Well, thank you, Noel. Again, my name is Michael McCullough. I am running for mayor of Bonny Lake. I decided to run for mayor because since I've been living here, we've only had one, which is my opponent, Mr. Johnson. He has been in office since two thousand and six, and it is now twenty twenty-one, meaning he's given fifteen years good service to the city. However, I feel like at this point, Bonny Lake needs change, needs a new mayor, needs some fresh and proactive action from our council so that our residents do benefit from such. Currently, while I've been observing our council's activities for about the last six weeks, and I'm very impressed by how they do operate, I do think that at this point, our residents have been kind of put by the wayside with certain with certain enjoyments that the city should have. At this point, I think that there has not been enough emphasis on small business. I don't think that there has been enough effort to have benefits that the residents would like, which are increased parks, fully developed parks, traffic, traffic control, and again, we can look at the way that our water and sewers have been have been built. Since I've been doing this campaign, I have been the only one out there doing any sort of proactive measures, and I believe that Bonny Lake deserves proaction in this case, that they need a mayor that's going to work for them, that will appear at public activities, that will be the face of Bonny Lake in the future, and thank you.
Thank you, Michael. And next, Dan, your opening statement, please.
Thank you very much, Dan Swatman, running for position three on the Bonny Lake City Council. Folks know that I am a current council member. I've been on the council for a few years now, lucky enough to be reelected a few times there. So I believe that the city has a lot of work to do. I really like the legislative process that I sit in as a council member, one of seven council members, so it's always great to get a diversity of opinions out on the floor to be able to come to a decision that's probably the best for everyone in the city. Because really that diversity of opinions really is able to give us really a solid decision. Again, with a strong mayor, former government, you know, the mayor executes upon the legislation that the the city council puts out there. So there's a lot of things that the city needs to work on, some of them mentioned by a mayor candidate there, such as the parks and sidewalks. Utilities is always a huge issue because that really hits the pocketbooks of the ratepayers that I serve. So I've been very diligent in working with that issue. There's a lot of work that needs to be done there. A lot of the previous administrative actions and councils of the past have not done enough, I believe, to deal with those issues in the long-term type of thing, which has really resulted in some rates that are just not not acceptable at all in the utility area. That really needs to be dealt with, and hopefully we'll have a good group of council members in next year to be able to work with that. We'll find out. A lot of things in the city that, you know, public safety is really important, and we have a really great police force there that needs to be supported. The Bonny Lake area itself is very beautiful with its plateau and the trees, everything like that, so we need to remain, you know, very careful about getting development to pay for development. Okay, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Pablo, your opening statement, please.
Yeah, hello, my name is Pablo Monroy, running for Bonny Lake City Council, position six. I want to start by apologizing. I just had surgery in my back of my throat, so if I sound a little funny, that's why. But I am a soldier of the armed National Guard. I do that full-time as an instructor and also co-owner of the Odd Order Brewing Company for the city of Bonny Lake. I am your chair for the Park Commission, and you'll constantly see me out in tunes of taps and beautiful by Bonny Lake, and anything to get involved is my passion, has been for years. So I already know a lot of you Bonny Lakers out there, and you know me, and you can see me around all the time. But right now, we have a choice, choice of the future of the city and choice for the future of the city council. What I want to see is a council that respects us, a council that shows up, a council that listens to you. This, for example, is the first time in Bonny Lake the past five years at least, the past two election cycles, where we have no forum that people are showing up to, that people are willing to host, and yet very few show up, even though this is the first time in thirty years that we've had every position, including the mayor, would be unopposed or be round opposed. There's challengers for every position, and that's history. And this panel right here is history as well, where we get to listen, you get to ask questions, and this is fantastic, and I want to see more of this from our council. What my campaign represents and what I wanted to try to do, and what I'm going to do for as a council member, is bring a sense of transparency, accountability, and efficiency to the to the city council. And we could do that in one of many ways, but the first step is to listen, to sit there, hear what you have to say, and answer your questions, even if they're hard, because they're going to be, and they should be. So thank you for the League of Women Voters for hosting this, and I look forward to the questions.
Thank you all very much. The and we'll begin. First question goes to Dan, followed by Pablo. What pressing issue did the mayor, the council, address it?
Can you repeat the question? I didn't, you broke up slightly, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Having internet problems today, if it becomes difficult, we'll have an assistant moderator step in. Sorry, we'll try it again. What is the most pressing issue for?
So this is Cynthia.
And the city council address it.
Okay. What is the most pressing issue for the city, and how should the mayor and council address it? We'll start with Pablo.
Okay, sorry, me. Well, from what I go, and I go and talk to voters and talk to people, talk to citizens, talk to my neighbors, it does seem to be the water bill when it comes to the things that you can actually control. For this election cycle, it's been a lot of the issues that are coming up are stuff that the city council doesn't have jurisdiction over, can't fix, and that's has have been the campaign issues. So really, as a good candidate, you have to filter, what can you accomplish, what can you do? So when it comes to actual issues that the council can fix, that does come down to the utilities when it comes down to the sewer system and the costs that have been given to the to the citizens of the city. Right now, we can't do, it got to the point where we can't do much about it. However, we can do have steps to stop the bleeding, so to speak. We can have, we can step forward on actually capping the cost, getting those to stop, and then at that point, to work on lowering them. People are getting pressed out of their own cities, people that have lived here for, you know, since our city's founding, that can't start, they can't afford the certain water bills, and they can't afford the utilities anymore. And we're pricing people out of the city. So, so from what I listened to, that seems to be the pressing issue on top of all the other costs it has to trying to own and trying to buy a home in Bonny Lake. It's affordability is the biggest thing, but that what we can fix as a council is depress the utilities at the very least. Can't fix the market, can't fix how, you know, what buyers are selling for, what they're going to want to purchase for. We can fix at least one aspect, keep Bonny Lakers here and keep them from leaving our community.
Next, we'll go to Michael.
Sorry, I had to unmute, and it's the same question?
Yes.
Okay, I do agree with Mr. Monroy on this on this issue. The residents that I have spoken with and the voters that I've spoken with overwhelmingly are concerned about their water and sewer bill, and that's what's been the most talked about issue during this entire campaign. I have not, I have not been involved in city politics yet until this campaign comes along. So what bothers me about what has been done at this point is the fact that everybody seems to have kind of a flippant attitude when it comes to approaching the utilities at this point, and they're kind of resigned to the fact that there's nothing that we can do about it. From what I understand, we're part of an interlocal agreement. I would be researching that interlocal agreement to find out what we can do, and in essence, thinking outside the box, you know, in bringing in change and new blood to the council. It would, I think we can go in a different direction to find out exactly what we can do rather than thinking about what we cannot do. And that's my answer for this for this particular question.
Thank you. Let's go to Dan.
All right, thank you very much. So yes, utilities, I would agree, are always something that shows up on the top of everyone's list because they get a bill for that every month. There's issues with the cost of that is just tremendous for some folks. We went through the hottest dry summer ever. A lot of folks have mandated with their, you know, actually watering their lawn, so that becomes pretty extreme. There's reports of, you know, multi-hundred-dollar, eight-hundred-dollar water bills out there. It's just ridiculous for an individual homeowner. So dealing with the water rates is definitely something I've always been on, you know. It tends to be that the citizens don't believe that, you know, the city council members do anything with that. But there's seven city council members and individual members all have their individual opinions about that. I happen to be a process engineer in my professional career, so I know a lot about infrastructure. So I've been able to identify particular issues with sewer systems and challenge the staff to reduce costs because I actually know, looking at items, what they cost. I have alternate ways of doing things. We have the American Recovery Plan monies that is going to be federal one-time grant monies coming down that need to be applied, and I want those applied to capital projects within the water and sewer utilities that'll kind of flatten out those rates. I think there may be something going on with a water block tiering rate that's not accurate because the rate study that was done seems to have predicted a lower usage than what we're having. We have to get those figures from staff and working to get actuals and compare them to what the model was telling us, so that way we can see if our rates are actually matching our expenses. Thank you.
Noel, are you able to pick this up? Okay, well, this is Cynthia. I will ask the next question then. The twenty twenty census showed that Bonny Lake was one of the fastest-growing cities in Pierce County. County population increased sixteen percent. Bonny Lake's population increased twenty-nine percent. How will you balance the needs of an expanding population with those of the long-term residents? And we'll start with Michael.
Thank you, Cynthia. First of all, can everybody hear me? I'm, I've got a pop-up here saying unmute myself, and I already have. Yes, if everybody can hear me. That is an issue, or that is something that I was aware of, the fact that Bonny Lake is growing at twice the rate that Pierce County is. And which is why the theme of my campaign has been let's balance Bonny Lake. I believe that that's why we need to address the residents' issues through an open and transparent council and change the way that that our residents can communicate with the council. Just recently, I was reading through the Housing Action Plan that is still, that's before the council, and discussing with the realtors potential solutions to what we can do about housing, specifically creating multiplexes and multifamily housing within our area. And then again, I believe we can fully develop our park system. And then I also think that we need to address bringing back public transportation to the entire city as opposed to just having it to where you have to drive to the park and ride at this point. I believe our growth has merited that, and I believe that it needs to be addressed by the council.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Dan, same question.
Okay, thank you very much. So yes, growth is definitely a spot of contention in Bonny Lake, of course. It is an urbanized area. We are required by state law to grow. It's the plan. It's always the important part, right? We've got to have the correct plan out there. We have to partner with the developers so that they are paying a significant portion of their share of development. So you'll see a lot of that now that you didn't see before, where they have to put in sidewalks, they're mandated for stormwater treatments, and then they're also mandated to pay their share of the water and sewer fees, so that way it doesn't come back on the ratepayers. It's just really important to pay attention to the plans. We have the Urban Planner and Jason Sullivan on staff, which is just a fantastic planner, and he does a great job in looking at things like identified with the Housing Action Plan. We were able to work with the Department of Commerce to get a grant funding down so that we can actually address many planning issues with grant funds from the state to help all the people in Bonny Lake and also being able to adjust for the need for increased density in housing in areas that don't, you know, destroy the character of neighborhoods. You can pick and choose where you need to place those developments, but you definitely need to plan for growth. That's what the key is, is being able to plan properly and communicate that out to the citizens so they understand why you have to be growing and what you're doing and why you're doing it. That's always an important part is getting that communication out here. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we go to Pablo.
Yeah, I'm piggyback off of what Dan said. I mean, we do need to, you know, communicate and listen. There's two different, you know, aspects. There's the people moving in, people that want to join our community, and those that have been here and have seen it just grow so much. But we don't have a active listening component where, you know, we can actually capture what people want to see. What I have seen in talking to people is, you know, the where, you know, what some new people that are just moving here want, and what people that have been here a long time. Sometimes they matches up, more green spaces, sidewalks, managed growth, traffic. Some of the side roads have become actual main roads, slowing those drivers down. They're driving through Bonny Lake for the sake of safety. There's a lot of things that both sides, both new and old Bonny Lakers agree on, but we just need that listening component and that communication. Right now, it's really lagging. It's a kind of a come-to-me, you know, email, email them when you can, kind of council, where we should actually be out there asking those questions and really listening. I know I'm listening, and I know I hear you, Bonny Lake. We need to slow people down on the side roads so your dog doesn't go around over. We need to create more, you know, better crosswalks. We need for some public transportation going all the way to Safeway. I mean, we pay for it for the entire city. Might as well get a little bit coming back to us, right? So we got to just go out there and listen. There's both sides. Both people have been here and people are moving here, want some of the same things, so we've got to put it together.
Thank you. Noel, are you able to step back in?
Let me give it a try here.
Thank you.
The next question, and Pablo, you'll be you'll be first. In this era of COVID nineteen, how would you balance personal responsibility and individual liberties for citizens with the safety needs of small business owners and their employees?
This isn't a city issue. City really can't do much. They pretend they can with resolutions that honestly, with a body that's never had any kind of adversity, will talk about segregation and pride when it comes to different avenues of equality, what people have fought for without having ever faced it themselves. So I mean, I know this is kind of a bad answer for the question, but that's up to the state. I mean, there's a lot of balancing needs to happen. Honestly, I believe I'm a person that believes in personal liberty and personal responsibility, and business is I own one, and a lot of the mandates that we have to enforce are mainly out of fear of shutting down. But this is nothing that the city can control, and any council member that says that they can't control this is lying to you. And they have lied throughout the campaign that this is something that they can accomplish. It's not. And that shouldn't be a focal point of any part of this election, and it shouldn't be an election out of fear either.
Thank you. Dan, same question, please.
Yes, thank you. Yes, exactly right. You know, State Department of Health or what have you is going to regulate those types of aspects that the city is going to have to follow. The city can't be out there trumping the authority of the state or the health departments. They need to follow that guidance very carefully. What the city can do is support the business and the impacts that those will have on the businesses and the individuals out there. So the city has been using some, again, federal grant funds that came out in the COVID funds to mitigate some of the effects on the businesses when the business has to close or has to curtail operations to, you know, comply with the regulations, that the funds were available for them to apply for and get to hopefully help them out so that they could stay around. It's a really, you know, huge environment of risk out there. Every individual needs to be able to do what they need to do to whether they're comfortable with. You know, it's really, you know, like I stated, it's really not, you know, the regulatory environment is not in cities. It's just the city's kind of support, you know, individual private businesses definitely need to be able to make their own regulations. Also, a small business owner here that, you know, we need to be able to establish whether we want people in or out of our businesses with different aspects of that. But people are free to, you know, wander around outside how they like in public, but once they come into a private business, there, you know, needs to be regulation. Thank you.
Thank you. And Michael, the same question, please.
And may I ask you to repeat the question, Danny Dan?
Absolutely, absolutely. In this era of COVID nineteen, how would you balance personal responsibility and individual liberties for citizens with the safety needs of small business owners and their employees?
Well, Pablo, I didn't hear a lot of Dan's answer, and I apologize for that, but I had something going on in the back. But Pablo did hit the nail on the head when it comes to just the jurisdictional issues that go along with any sort of municipal resolutions that come out versus the state mandates from our governor and the council and the county mandates. But what we can probably have, or what I would like to see, is some coordination as far as how the city can coordinate to make it a good balance between the personal responsibility versus the small business owners, and that's again where open and transparent government comes in. It's something that I believe needs to be researched and that, talking about grant money and revenues. We, but we as a council, as has been pointed out, cannot enact any sort of resolution that is actually implementable. It in wasting time on that is not a good, efficient way to run the council. So I think we need to look more into coordination efforts with the state and the county and go from there.
Thank you. And a reminder to those in the audience, if you have any questions, you can text them to two zero six three one zero eight nine six five. The next question, okay, great, thank you. The next question goes to Michael first. Because Bonny Lake is a considerable distance from most places of work, and because of the patterns of development in the city, residents depend on automobiles. However, data shows that transportation is the biggest source of greenhouse gas emissions in Pierce County. How will you address the need to reduce transportation emissions? Michael, you're first, please.
I believe that when I answered about developing or redeveloping our public transportation throughout the city as opposed to commuters that that come about. When the Housing Action Plan was was being researched, they they did a study that showed that Bonny Lake is primarily commuters. They take their vehicles and they also go to our park and ride and take a bus down to the Sounder and go into the city that way. In fact, I've spent years doing that myself, and I felt lucky that I live on the right side of the city to be able to even theoretically walk to the park and ride and take the bus from there to where I don't have to move my car at all. So working, working to increase the the method of getting over to the park and ride or creating another park and ride, if that is the case, on the east side of town would might ease traffic a bit, and it would give our residents a choice in how they go to work. So, and it, so in keeping that in balance with the environment is, you know, will always be, would always be on the table.
Thank you. Dan, you're next for the same question, please.
Very good, thank you. So yes, of course, living in the middle of workforce changes now is pretty incredible. As many people know, a bunch of people don't have to go into the office anymore. Being in the technology field, and apparently the bosses have finally figured out that, oh, yeah, they didn't actually need to show up to work to actually do their work. So increasing the ability for people to do that within the city, I think, is really one of the keys besides the transportation aspects that were just mentioned, I completely agree with. You know, giving the people the tools to be able to effectively do their jobs. Right now, they're stuck with possibly Comcast or maybe a Quest DSL link. Tahali is built around like a fiber optic system out there, which is a city right next door to us. You know, we need to concentrate on making sure that we have lots of providers available for people to be able to have high-speed internet available to them. Make some, like I sit right now and happens to be in Bellingham, doing this remotely. These are great things. We didn't, unfortunately, it would have been great if we could have came together and physically sat there, but we didn't have to do that. So those are things that are really going to, I think, shape the future of cities is technology, really. Technology that's kind of hard to almost imagine right now. But giving those tools and having them available for citizens to choose from, I think, is a key factor there. Thank you.
Thank you. Pablo, please.
So we are, yeah, so we are an incredibly fast-paced, fast-growing city. And, you know, we do have to look at the transportation and increase the options. I know a lot of us don't want to pay for ST three. I know I don't, you know, because I don't get any benefit from it. So it's time to bring those benefits back to Bonny Lake, the old park right on the east side. We're putting money into the system. We need to get something back out of it, and we advocates that we want to do so. But it'd be a lot of investment. But, uh, it'd be a lot of investment for, you know, like Dan said, is that going to be the future? I mean, companies are moving out of Seattle, moving down south, moving closer to here. I'd say, you know, have Bonnie Lake even be an option for businesses to come here, start growing, start basing themselves around this area, work with our, uh, cities around us saying, hey, you know, where this is, you have a lot of talent here, um, but a lot of potential. And if you do want to, you know, care about the environment, if you do want to care about our, uh, missions, then you got to move it closer to your employees. Uh, down in Sumner, there's a lot of businesses there, Amazon, REI, um, where I've worked. And, uh, you know, those commutes are short. And we need to increase those options for our area and partner with our cities, partner with our Chamber of Commerce and do what we can for, you know, bring the businesses here and also have small people like me, you know, and, uh, people like that are listening in, start their businesses here so they can hire people. That's less people going all the way to Seattle. That's less people going, you know, commuting to Tacoma. And that will, you know, help increase, uh, lower carbon footprint for our city. And, uh, we'll solve the, solve the issue. It's gonna be a while till we see any kind of benefit of, uh, you know, the train coming anywhere near Bonnie Lake besides the Sumner or any kind of light, of light rail system. So what we can do is, um, just increase the options for businesses here.
Hey, thank you, Pablo. Okay, uh, Dan, you're first for this next question. Uh, how would you reprioritize the budget if you're elected?
Reprioritize the budget? A big subject there, eh? Um, what changes, uh, importantly, again, you know, as mentioned, listening to the people, you know, when we get the new council, whatever it is composed of, I think we need to have a really a listening tour almost where we can find out what the priorities of the citizens are. Those are the people that I serve that I need to understand what they see as pain points. They might see that, uh, crime or theft is in, in certain areas is way up, that it needs a little bit more monies devoted over in that aspect. Um, again, the utilities are a huge area, but they are self-funded within themselves. You don't per se reprioritize in there in the utilities because they're enterprise funds. Um, so if you're dealing with general fund monies, um, you know, using, uh, the increased tax funds that we have that are coming in to make sure that they actually are prioritized for public good, meaning sidewalks, parks, open spaces and such, and that we don't overly hire, uh, you know, permanent individuals as opposed to kind of a service-based organization where we, we need services that we can hire out, uh, the experts. We don't need to hire internally for long-term permanent folks. Um, again, you know, just trying to prioritize funding uh, as needed to provide the most value to the citizens where they can actually get use out of it, you know? Planners are great. We need them, got to have them. However, it's kind of hard for a citizen to get value out of that, really. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, Pablo?
Yeah.
Please.
Yeah, no, I agree with the, um, listening tour aspect of it, but you know, that's where the campaign should be, are the listening tours. Um, the council that's, you know, out there pretty much knows what the priorities of the citizens are. But also as a candidate and as a representative of, you know, what's twenty, of twenty thousand people, uh, we kind of got to see overall what's going to benefit the most people. Um, and we all have, you know, and I agree with public spaces, uh, also, you know, safety aspects, especially with the side roads that are now major roads. Um, safety is the big aspect, fully, you know, fully funding our police department, um, and making sure that, uh, we get that new fire station, you know, built and doing what we can for the city. But there's also pet projects in there that have taken, uh, a pretty much no priority given at all, uh, such as a press and, uh, contracting with a major newspaper in order to inform the public. It's really hard to listen. It's really hard to ask the question when the public doesn't know what's going on. So one of my personal things that should be on the budget that hasn't been is, you know, contracting with, with the news tribune, contracting with the Courier-Herald. So the citizens know what's going on because it's really hard to ask, what do you want to see when you're not telling them what there is to see? So that's one of my, uh, one of my priorities is to inform the public and do what we can to do that at better outreach. So we, as you know, future council members and current council members and maybe even future mayors will actually have good conversations with the citizens and I just tell them what they want to hear so we get the answer we want.
Thank you. Michael, please.
Yes, um, I believe, uh, um, uh, both candidates have, have touched upon, uh, a very salient subject. Um, when I come in, um, I, first of all, it would be to the executive branch, I believe that I would, um, have, um, that I, I would have to look at it forensically. I would have to get copies of the budget uh, and, um, and either hire, uh, uh, forensic experts or see exactly what we can do to go through the budget and see what we can prioritize. But, um, as far as, uh, reprioritizing, uh, say, the safety and enjoyment uh, to our citizens are, is, is key, especially safety. This is an area to where people have moved because they want to raise families. Um, and, uh, there is a lot of effort that goes towards safety for, uh, for small children. And, um, and looking at, um, uh, different safety aspects of that, I believe needs to be at the forefront of, of any budget that, um, uh, that will develop. Um, I will have to learn how to, um, how to propose that budget and I will have to learn how to, uh, coordinate that with the council. But I believe that devoting it to, um, our citizens is, uh, is key.
Thank you. Pablo, uh, you're going to be first for this next question. Given the intense heat and wildfires and smoke we're experiencing summer now with closures of Highway 410 in a recent summer, how could Bonnie Lake address climate change?
Well, that's a tall order. Uh, we were, we're, you know, still, as much as we're growing, still a small city. Um, but it's fine. Wildfires are something I know pretty dearly, uh, being in the National Guard, uh, been called up to fight those fires and seeing firsthand what it does to certain communities. And then a couple of years later, seeing what it does to my own community. Uh, so when it comes to forest management, uh, when it comes to managing side of a roads and it comes to managing our, our canopy, um, that, those are all things that we can't control within the city. And that's, uh, just, it depends on the context. Uh, we are, there, there are talking to people, a lot of people that, you know, don't, that think that climate change is a myth. There's a lot of people that think climate change is hysteria. Um, and honestly, so we got to find ways to, you know, bring, I guess, science to, to the forefront of it at the same time, see where the common, where the common solutions are. Yeah, so people, a person doesn't believe in climate change, does believe in pollution. Person doesn't believe in, you know, what the, uh, effects of heat and everything have in our community can't see that there's smoke and fire coming up the hill and there's people evacuating. So we got to find those common points and then fix what we can fix and to benefit the entire city and to really sell it. Uh, as council members, we are not only representatives, sometimes we're a little, sometimes salesmen. When we do get that data and info, we do have, uh, facts and figures. We have to sell it to the community because we're given all of that. And it's, and a lot in the public is really, especially in city Bonnie Lake, where they're not given a newspaper, not given a proper, you know, way of communicating with them. A lot of people just don't know what these are. And all of the arguments come down to sometimes bumper stickers. And we just need a better way forward. So as council members, the way to help and fix this is to become salesman a little bit. Get that knowledge and figure out how to let the citizens know and then get their opinion on it.
Thank you, Pablo. Thank you very much. Okay, um, I hope you can hear me. Uh, Dan, or that question?
Was that for me? You wanted me to do the same question?
Yeah, Dan, Dan, can, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, I can hear you. Yes. So same question.
Uh, I'll repeat the question. Given the intense heat and wildfires and smoke we're experiencing each summer now with closures of Highway 410 in a recent summer, how could Bonnie Lake address climate change?
Right, well, uh, on, uh, of course, a global issue, right? Um, you know, Bonnie Lake is clearly a very small portion of that, but a portion of it. So, um, participating in um, the issue, you know, with things like the tree canopy that we've spent some money on doing tree canopy surveys. So we recognize that's an important part of the environment. Um, we have a significant investment in the Fennel Creek Trail System, which provides a linear park system with open space, green space. Uh, you know, Bonnie Lake itself is just a very interesting area with all the trees and the topography and, and the lake and streams. Uh, private lakes, public lakes, they need to, you know, recognize and, and we kind of work that into, um, again, that messaging to the public so that they understand, you know, why this is important, why the tree canopy, why, why we're working on all these things out there, uh, you know, everything down to stormwater cleanup and different things that help the environment. Uh, we do our part out there basically so they can understand when development happens, why we have tree retention policies. Um, why we want to, you know, make sure that they don't have too much impervious surface for the heating effects and everything. But we can do a lot of little things, obviously not going to solve global warming or anything. It'd be wonderful if we could. Um, but we'll work towards being part of the solution, you know, as much as we can. Basically, I think in the end is a great, thank you.
So Michael, you're next, please.
All right, thank you. Um, again, the, the question seems a little, uh, the context of the question, uh, starting out with, uh, the, with the wildfires and then ending with, uh, climate change uh, seems a little, um, uh, it, it kind of meanders, uh, in the way that, that we should answer this question because the first thing I thought of was, uh, resident safety and the safety plan that we would have in, in fact, in evacuating the city because of the Sumner Great Fire that we had and we, uh, have learned from that. How, uh, and if the question has to do with, um, um, climate change based on the, on the fire that, uh, uh, came along, I believe that since, uh, uh, Bonnie Lake has been raided, uh, uh, with the Tree USA, uh, people in the retention of the, uh, of the canopy, uh, uh, and working with, um, fire and safety to be able to, uh, uh, to be able to contain any sort of, uh, fire that won't contribute to the cut, to the, uh, climate change, um, is, is key. Now, as far as any other climate change issues that we would have, we should look more into solar power. We should look into wind power. We should work, look into ways that we can, um, have alternative, uh, ways of being able to, uh, rather than relying on fossil fuels.
Thank you. I, I can try the next question. Can you hear me?
Oh, I can hear you, yes.
All right, great. All right. So let me, let me, uh, give it a try with the next question. And Michael, you are first for this question. And there's already been some mention of this, uh, but let's see what else. If there are additional things you could, uh, contribute. What is your plan to increase access to parks and green space, especially for lower-income residents who may have fewer transportation options?
Well, um, uh, Dan did, did, uh, uh, address, uh, this earlier with the Fennel Creek Project that, um, is, is developing uh, right now. And, uh, how to approach it would be to, um, uh, to make the council aware of it and, uh, and, and again, have a, have a, uh, a plan to where, uh, the citizens can come and let us know uh, through, uh, either through online or they can come the traditional way of coming into the council, um, giving them more time to, um, uh, to assess, uh, citizen either complaints or criticism when it, uh, when it comes to that, but keeping it a priority, keeping park development um, a priority and looking at it from a budgetary, uh, stance as well. When I answered the question about, um, um, uh, where we were, uh, uh, trying to think of, of what it was when I was saying, uh, uh, resident safety and enjoyment. I think that was, uh, the budget priority question. However, it, um, uh, the enjoyment part is very important when it comes to developing a, um, uh, keeping the city developed and keeping the city with a good park system. And, uh, and that would indeed include everybody. We have to look, we have to balance diversity. We have to balance where these parks are and take into consideration, uh, how, how, uh, citizens would get to those parks and, um, what the, you know, how big the parks are, what the, what we would have within those parks.
Thank you. Pablo, you're, you're, uh, any additional comments?
Absolutely. I mean, I'm the Park Commission Chair, so parks is, uh, kind of my passion. Uh, what got me excited about it was Midtown Park. Uh, when I moved, uh, to Bonnie Lake and I moved like right across, uh, on 104th, I was wondering what's going on with that forest. These are going to be trails. And, uh, kind of going through it, it's kind of become a dangerous place to go somewhere. I won't even take my dog at one point. And, uh, the point, there's actually, there was a point where a student got stabbed in that park. So, um, of course, safety is, creating safety around these parks is paramount in order to maintain, uh, people actually go to them. I mean, no matter how my, how nice you make it, no matter how much you clearcut it, if it's dangerous, uh, that affects people from every community for me of going. But unfortunately, the parts of the more dangerous affect low, lower-income communities. So, um, access to parks is paramount. We do have a, a good park system in the city. However, when we come to building and it comes to budgeting, it's one park at a time. It seems to be all Allen York Park. Um, I do want to see, uh, open, open spaces, uh, especially a Midtown Park with a big open space created there and more awareness for these parks. I'm right now spearheading a project to help rename the parks, uh, rename, uh, Midtown Park, which is a placeholder name and giving that back to the community to decide. And, uh, so creating awareness for the parks, making sure they're safe and honestly not, and not prioritizing just one park at a time, but every park in the city, I think we'll accomplish that goal.
Thank you. Uh, Dan, please, for the same question.
Yeah, thank you very much. Uh, so Midtown Park is mentioned, yes, a very large park in the center of the, uh, city that needs to be developed. It's been desperately in need of significant development for many years. There's been a lot of contention on monies, as mentioned on that particular piece there. So that's a real big priority. I think, uh, you know, the park board and everyone, including Pablo's doing a great job of pushing that subject along there. Hopefully we'll see something happen over there very shortly. We have a master plan coming up for that area. But connectivity to the parks, uh, we were actually just working on finishing up some sidewalk allocations to make sure to finish some, uh, missing links out there so that we can have everyone that has as much access as possible to get to the various parks, whether it's Allen York, Midtown, Cedar View Park, uh, Sky Island area. There's all of those parks in various areas that increase the ability for people to get to them locally, so they don't have to be transported to them. Um, we have the Fennel Creek Trail, as mentioned, that goes through just a myriad of areas. And once we get that one all, it actually connects up multiples of the parks, whether it's the Allen York or the Victor Falls piece down there, which is substantial park is one of the largest, tallest falls west of Pablo probably knows, but it's, it's, it's really fantastic down there. Um, we have a significant amount of resources parks-wise out there. Funding is always, you know, the key factor to that. But again, demonstrating, you know, to the public what it could be and how they can fund it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Okay, uh, here's the next question. I'm, a new growth management requirement was passed in the 2021 legislative session. This requires that the city plan for a full range of housing options for its population and for anticipated growth. The options need to include housing for very low-income residents, supportive housing and shelter. What steps should the city take to assure that this range of housing is available? And Pablo, you are first.
All right. Well, the answer to that question, Western Mississippi within, uh, it's the largest waterfall within city limits. So, that's Victor Falls. So going on to the question though, um, one of my inspirations to run was hearing, uh, one of the people, people on the council talk about these, um, that new regulation. And, uh, the quote was that they don't want to see, they don't want their children to be around that. And by that, uh, that means poor people. Um, I grew up poor. Um, I know what it's like just to have hot dogs for dinner. That's the best dinner you can have. That's all your family could afford. And, um, and I know how hard my mom worked on raising, raising me by herself for a while, um, to live somewhere safe. And I know there's families here that are, you know, contemplating moving out of the city because it's unaffordable. We need to create those options for them. I know that on the campaign, some have said that all that low-income housing will do is bring people from Seattle to Bonnie Lake, but there's actually Bonnie Lakers that need this. We need to create it. There's an area behind Safeway where we can build more apartments. There is that, there's a community that is built where the old butter biscuit was, which people have said that it has a large uh, amount of crime. Well, to that, it's for that amount of people that live in that one area, it's actually. amount of crime. Well, to that, it's for that amount of people that live in that one area, it's actually very similar to the rest of Bonnie Lake. So people need to stop trashing poor people. That's just what's, what it comes down to and really come on, coming up with solutions because sometimes people are too embarrassed. In Bonnie Lake High School and in the Bonnie Lake school system here, there are six different families that I'm aware of that are homeless in our own city. And these are children. And it's just a problem. And it's not people coming from Bonnie Lake. It's Bonnie Lakers wanting to stay in Bonnie Lake. It's kids wanting to stay here.
Thank you, Pablo. All right, Dan, the same question, please.
Very good. So yes, as mentioned, the Housing Action Plan previously, that was, came out of that piece of legislation from the state level. So we were able to, again, grab some grant funds to actually do that in coordination with the city of Sumner. So it's kind of a, you know, one of those issues where homeless lists and price of housing isn't just for Bonnie Lake, it's for the area. Working with everyone out there to get that diversity of housing in there. And as mentioned, we did actually have a very large development out on four ten there with the, it's federally subsidized housing so that there can be some reduced rent in that area. Those housing needs to be, you know, a variety for people, need to be able to do that without, you know, absolutely going in and bulldozing a neighborhood or something like that. There are many places that it works just fine when it's done as a plan to work it out so that it can be there. There's, there's all kinds of examples where there's housing that nobody has any idea that they're multifamily or anything like that, that works just fine in different areas. So, you know, as pointed out, it's very critical to have that diversity in housing out there. It's mandated by the state. And again, the grant funding and that study that we're talking about is able to help us to know where to place that and how to do that, you know, needs to be with transportation and all kinds of different things. Big planning issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. Michael, your response, please.
Yes, as, as I mentioned earlier in, in one of the answers, one of the things that I have done during the campaign is, is read the Housing Action Plan that, that was developed and it was very comprehensive. And one of the things that it did address was, was the need for multifamily dwellings here in, in Bonnie Lake. When I discussed that with the realtors, they, they were very interested and, and had positive, had positive feedback on the fact that we need to focus on developing multifamily dwellings along with the, with the development that has been going on lately. Now, as far as incentives or say in the permitting process or any sort of, in the way that that goes, we can, we can work to streamline that. And, and we can work with the developers as far as possible incentives and get tough if we have to with the, with the developers as far as what they would need to develop to service our, our residents and our potential residents. When it comes to developing those, those multifamily dwellings or, or multiplexes or duplexes and and I believe that, that's good. We don't have to take the entire ninety seconds.
All right. Thank you, Michael. Here, here's the last question. And there's been a little reference to this, but I, we're going to give it a little more time. And Pablo, you're first. What can the city do to protect residents from violent crime?
Support the police. Tell you.
Okay. Thank you, Pablo. All right. Dan, anything you want to add on that, that subject, please?
No, yeah, very good. So that is a interesting kind of problem for the city of Bonnie Lake. Not so much in the violent crime area, but that is generated by the, you know, criminal element, if you will. Because Bonnie Lake has a lot of big business type aspects. Now, those big corporate businesses tend to have a lot of concerns with risk right now. And they let people literally walk out of their, you know, establishment without any prosecution. They don't even want to, it's, it's shocking to see what goes on at times out there. That's not a, you know, violent crime, of course, and that's why they're letting them just write that off. But we need to participate with those businesses and we have been. There's some business coalitions for Safeway's made a lot of improvements with their parking lot lighting and different things. But, you know, it's really that, almost kind of that broken window type of a thing where if you, because those are actually criminal enterprises, some of them, they're actually assigned to go get certain products and then they're taking them back and then they're exchanging them for cash and then they're getting the drugs to do other things. So, you know, that feeds into that criminal kind of atmosphere. So our police are doing a great job of that. Definitely need to support that system of policing and make sure that we can work with businesses out there. That's, that's what creates a lot of the criminal element in the Bonnie Lake is that type of a thing. So that's what I know.
Thank you. And Michael, please.
Oh, thank you. Oh, and my, oh, good. I'm not muted. Well, this is right up my alley. My professional career, I am a, I have worked in the criminal justice system for the last twenty years versus a prosecutor and now as a public defender. And I've worked in different aspects of, of the, of public defense. Not only with, with crimes, but with domestic violence and, and especially now mental health issues. So what we can do here is, and, and I thoroughly agree with what's been said before. And I had an interview with, with our chief of police or I, and he and I agree on his style of policing and I'm very impressed by it. We have thirty-two officers within Bonnie Lake. And what we talked about was their response times, their coordination with, with either the troopers, the Washington State Troopers or, or the, or Pierce County Council in, in how they would do that. But we also need to address the fundamental issues that cause violent crimes in the first place. A lot of that has to do with mental health. A lot of that has to do with drug possession and, and what I found very impressive is the fact that we are increasing our community service officers, our CSOs. We're bringing on a new one that can be a good intermediary between, between the potential violent crimes and being committed and, and being prevented.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the candidates. Now it's time for closing statements. You each have up to one minute. Dan will give the first closing statement followed by Pablo and then Michael.
So there's no questions from the audience there or anything?
No questions from the audience, but I have received.
Okay, very good. Well, I'd like to thank you guys again for the League of Women Voters for putting this together. Really appreciate the efforts in that. That's really fantastic. Again, all of the public discourse is necessary and required for good governance. We need as much of that as possible. It seems like really hard to do. As mentioned, we don't have a city newspaper or anything like that. You know, people are hesitant to raise their voice for anything because in the atmosphere of today, it seems to be that everybody wants to go out on Facebook or something and just yell about something without having the really good information or anything. So, you know, public discourse, very important. Hopefully the voters will vote for a good set of city council candidates and mayor of their choice. That's the great thing about democracy and I would appreciate the vote again. And I will serve the citizens to the best of my knowledge and ability. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Pablo, please.
Yeah, so, yeah, my name is Paul Monroe. I'm running for Bonnie Lake City Council, position six. And this is a very important election for Bonnie Lakers. We just had one of the, you know, biggest scandals happen in our, in our city council. I mean, if you just Google Bonnie Lake City Council broken law, you will find out, but we don't have a way of informing the public of that happening. We don't have a way of informing the public of what's going on on four ten and two fourteenth with the roundabout. We don't have a way of telling the public about, you know, when we win a football game, the new businesses that are coming in. They're, they're informing the public through press and through your newspaper that, you know, it's more than just a blog, more than just one reporter trying to figure all this out. Is important. And that's the way we're going to inform the public. And that's the way that we create transparency, accountability and efficiency. Key things that we need for the city. And it's really important that you go out there and you tell people to vote. You get yourself informed the best you can within our city, which is really tough for anybody right now and, and vote. And I want to thank the league for hosting this and it's very historic. So thank you.
And Michael, please, your closing statement.
Thank you. Again, my name is Michael McCullough. I am running for mayor of the city of Bonnie Lake. And the, one of the reasons why I have decided to, to run for mayor is that we need change. As been pointed out, our city has grown almost twofold in the last ten years. And we need to develop a council that can address a city of over twenty thousand people as opposed to a council that was formed back when we had about five to ten thousand people. And as has been pointed out, has run largely unopposed. So we need proaction. We need, we need to address issues that basically think outside the box of how it's been approached before. And if I am elected mayor, I will, we will, we will address that in a way when it comes to the council so that we can be more open and transparent to our citizens. And we can discuss it and, and address the issues that Bonnie Lake needs.
I'd like to thank the candidates for their participation. Like to thank our timekeeper, Terry Baker, and all our cosponsors. They're the Affordable Housing Consortium, Black and Indigenous Organizing, the Grid City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound, Southern Neighborhood Council, Summit Waller Community Association, Urban League, Vibrant Schools and the Asian American Cultural Center and the YWCA. The League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County wishes to acknowledge that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples surrounded by the traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Oklahoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities and current realities. Before you vote on November second, also check out the League of Women Voters Online Voters Guide, Vote 411. You can find it at www411.org and you can go to votewa.gov to check your voter registration. Both sites identify candidate information specific to your own voter precinct. We encourage everyone to use that as a resource in addition to the standard voter's guide. Look for your ballot in your mailbox on October seventeenth or shortly thereafter. Use one of the many drop boxes in our county or mail your postage paid ballot as soon as possible after you receive it. If you're not yet registered, you may register at the auditor's office through election day. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a drop, ballot drop box by eight P M on November second. And thanks again to everyone.